Harding. Harding. Melton. Melton. Pauls. Palermo is absent. Festerson. Gray.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Council Member Rich Pauls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I think I would defer to you because if you had more hair, because you smile like Santa Claus. So I think I would defer to you to give my spiel today.
Well, I think I'll defer to the jolly old council member from District Seven who's brought some entertainment.
If you would like, I will just kind of wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I have a proclamation to read, but I don't think we need to make everybody continue to stand about that.
And just real quick, an affidavit, a publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
All right, well, I would like, I would just like to bring everybody from the Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities group down to the podium, please. Vincent and all. Yes, this is Vincent Lienen, and I have a proclamation to read to all of you. I'll wait till everybody comes down. And I just want everybody to know, this is Vincent and everyone here, but I know Vincent, this is his 45th year of caroling, and he goes around the Omaha community and around, I mean, outside of Omaha, caroling to those in need. I have been caroling with them since 2013 was the first year I went to the River City Nursing Home next to Bergen. That's where I got to know all these wonderful people. And I believe it was Hal Dobb who's hiding back there, but he's the one that initially invited me the first time because he's been with them for decades.
Since the beginning.
Since the beginning, 45 years ago.
A guy named Don McCurdy. Bob McCurdy, Tom McCurdy.
Yep.
So that, and that's what we're, we're here today, 45 years you've been doing that for the citizens of Omaha, so I just have a little proclamation to read. Whereas the annual Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities is celebrating its 45th year, and through its services, the annual Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities has been celebrating the joy of the holiday season by delivering the gift of music, healing, and happiness. And members of the Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities have entertained, ministered to, and performed for audience throughout the Omaha community and actually around the country. Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities has provided music, merriment, and celebration to senior care residents, hospital patients, caregivers, and fellow event participants for 45 years. And whereas Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities embodies its motto, be the reason for the season, experience the power, magic, and impact of giving and receiving music. And now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Omaha extends its gratitude to the Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities organizers and participants for their unwavering service to this special event. In witness whereof, the Omaha City Council has caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed to this 17th day of December 2019 as Omaha Holiday Caroling festivities Day. So I want to thank you so much. I know Mr. Brinker Harding and I really enjoyed last Sunday with you, and we're both pleased that we can present this to you today.
And we enjoyed having you guys here with us, too. It was a lot of fun.
Yes.
Yes, but before we sing our song, our group has a message to all the city councilmen. On behalf of all the carolers, it's a true pleasure to say thank you for this tremendous honor. We started this project 45 years ago to bring cheer, holiday spirit, healing, and happiness into the lives of all of our seniors, their caregivers, and event participants. What better way to share the love, joy, and peace of the holiday season than through the magical power and impact of giving and receiving music? For every smile, for every toe tap, and every hand clap that we inspired over the last four and a half decades, nobody's been more blessed than us who have lent our time and talent to this rewarding project. Thank you again for this honor. You're all invited now to join us in a little merry-making as guitarist Terry and Rich and fellow carolers lead us in a rousing rendition of Jingle Bells followed by "We Wish You a Merry Christmas." Take it away.
One, two, three, five.
(laughing). 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 (laughing).
Thank you to loving our dogs for coming around with your therapy dogs with them as well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you all next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of the people's business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices at this time. Madam Clerk.
Item Six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for High Point Replat Nine located southeast of Veterans Drive and 204 Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be it as a request from the applicant to postpone this item to this meeting.
The public hearing on Item Six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Members of the Council, John Fulencamp, 11440 West Center Road. And since you're talking about a lot of years, I've been coming to podiums like this for almost 50 years, and that's the toughest act I ever had to follow.[584.79][584.79](Laughter). Here on a preliminary plat today, on a piece of property that's north of, excuse me, south of Veterans Drive and east of 202nd Street and 204th Street and just north of the Metropolitan Community College. The property is in conformance with the master plan. You'll note the, I don't know if you can see it, but the preliminary plat went to the city council in May of this year and continued a couple of times for you as we continue with our neighbor to the north, the Metropolitan Community College, to try to work out some technical amendments. And I, our engineers have been meeting, and I think as we go through the process, we'll get all those things worked out. This is an eight, approximately eight and a half acre site, which will have four lots, four outlots, and as the zoning is changing from R6 to community commercial with an MCC overlay. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item Six is approved seven to zero. Items Seven to Nine relate to the same project and could be considered together for Essencio located southeast of 16th and Pratt Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item Seven, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District, NHI District to GI District. Item Eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Essencio. Item Nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for Essencio.
The public hearing on Items Seven through Nine begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Matt Tinkum, Lamp Ryanirson, 14710 West Dodge Road.
David Skalka, Croker Huck Casher Dwyer Anderson Gondor, representing Mr. Essencio.
Mr. Essencio couldn't be with us today. He's feverishly trying to get some fiber in the ground before it gets too hard to continue working. So what we have here is Mr. Essencio bought this property on approximately 16th and Evans. It currently has two existing buildings on the site in a conglomeration of older city lots. Mr. Essencio has been cleaning the property up for about a year now and is managing to, or is occupying the smaller building, running his fiber optic company out of there, and then the larger building is being used by some storage, or as storage, by one of his clients. Our hope is to separate these two parts, or two buildings into two separate parcels with the hope of Mr. Essencio selling one of the larger parcel off to his business partner.
Happy to answer any questions?
Yep.
Thanks. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items Seven through Nine are approved seven to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Items Ten to Fifteen relate to the same project and could be considered together for Everett Place located at 450 South 193rd Plaza. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items Ten and Eleven are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R5 District. Item Twelve, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Everett Place with a waiver of Section 5384, law frontage. Item Thirteen, a resolution to approve the final plat for Everett Place. Item Fourteen, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow assisted living in an R5 District. Item Fifteen, a resolution to approve the Everett Place subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on Items Ten through Fifteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road here in Omaha. 618-5468154. Ooh, I almost looked the wrong way. With me also is Brent Beller, here on behalf of the applicant as well. Everett Place is a final plat before you. Just get our bearings a little bit. 192nd Street. This is Future Harney Street. And Leavenworth is here. That's coming up. And then Jones is right here. This is actually a larger final plat project. This will be a phased project. And so I'll go through, the land you said go through, but we're just focusing on this area here with this final plat. This final plat represents over three years of work with this entire area and includes a bunch of multiple properties and multiple agreements to the benefit of everybody in the area. I've got a lot of dates and times I really don't want to go through, but I do have a couple that I want to point out, so we're all on the same page here. First of all, back in 2000, May of, I'm sorry, February of 18, we met with the Fire Ridge Homer Association. The only issue they really had was some landscaping along our border. We agreed to increase the landscaping with some of our tree mitigation, and we solved that issue for them very early on. The next agreement that I want to mention is, was between what was, we still call it a Beller Lot today, but Mr. Jude Beller owned this at the time. We started the plating process back in 18. It then switched hands over to a Mr. Fichtner. Through that, we reached agreements on 193rd Street alignment, some land swapping, and some purchase of property as well as some right-of-way dedication. And we also have a cost-sharing agreement with Mr. Fichtner on this. This is really the second phase of where the villas and the Montessori would go. We also have an agreement in place with Mr. Daley, which is this project here. He is the owner of Grayfon Drive. That drive was source of a subject early on. We purchased a portion of that drive. It was part of our right as owning the Everett Place. And in part of that agreement, we agreed to remove any rights to redevelop that little finger of property so that he can use that as his access to 192nd Street. We also agreed to stop the pavement short until he was, has either sold or has moved on to save his trees as well. And so that agreement is in place. We do not have any opportunity to redevelop that piece of property as well. That was in June of 19. In February of 19, we reached an agreement with Avenue One Development for Harney Street. We've been working through some access either for Leavenworth. We initially had an access on 192nd Street with the 192nd Street project. There's a median there. Gave us two options. Came to an agreement with Avenue One to build from 192nd Street, the intersection, back to 193rd Street. Initially was going to be a two-lane section with some throwaway paving for down the road. Talking with Avenue One, we decided to build this entire section as you see it, as they have it planned in their future final plat going forward, to the tune of $350,000 out of a $570,000 project, roughly. We have a cost-sharing agreement with Avenue One, and we have an agreement in terms of any additional contribution. 192nd Street would be based on what the city came back with, and we believe that we do not have an additional contribution on 192nd Street, considering that contribution would be somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000, and we're somewhere between three and six times of that what normal contribution would be. I think it's an overall benefit to the project as well as the entire area for infrastructure. In addition, we bought the Barker property. This was completed in sometime last year. I didn't write that one down. That's an important piece of information in the purchase because, number one, any future right-of-way onto Harney Street would require some condemnation or purchase thereof of the Barker piece. If that's not under control, Avenue One is not using an SID. They lack the ability, like an SID, like our SID would, to come in and actually condemn that property. So by purchasing that, makes a Harney Street right-of-way available, we agree to dedicate it, and sharing the cost of that infrastructure. I think that's a good thing for the area. And then we have the final piece, the Nicely piece. Worked with the Nicely's from January of 17 to May of 18 on the alignment of Leavenworth, 193rd Street. We weren't able to come to an agreement with them, but everybody else in this area we have. So in general, this entire project comes down to the Greek Orthodox Church. Will go here. This will be multi-family senior housing, independent living, a senior housing project, assisted living. We've got an outlot of wetlands, and then this first two phases, the first phase is the church, the senior housing, and this lot here that does not include the Barker piece because this plat was going forward prior to that purchase. And then we will come, this replat, that includes the first phase of the villas and the Montessori school, and then combining these two projects will come before you in a preliminary plat probably in the next 30 to 60 days. For All Holy Greek Orthodox Church, this is a layout. The cathedral will be up, as far up onto the lot as possible with a green space and drop-off area, offices, some classrooms, and then a gathering area and some future expansion space for the church. It's an idea of what that elevation will look like. It'll be pronounced a building on that site. And then we do have, also have a special use permit for the assisted living project as well. So this is 193rd Street. This is the wetland area, and this is a consistent of assisted living as well as memory care in one facility. Two-story facility, brick and stone on the facility. Be a nice addition to the project. You know, a lot of time and effort went into this project, has continued to go into it. We had a lot of people to thank, particularly staff, Ryan Haas and Eric England, and Cherry Rockwell was not only with us, was absolutely incredibly important to the success of this project going forward to be where we're at. We're in conformance with all the zoning subdivision regulations, and we're in conformance with your comprehensive plan. We have a staff recommendation of approval, and we would ask for your approval and support here today. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, City Council. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300. I am here as attorney on behalf of Avenue One, and although I'm standing here in the opponent part of this phase of the project, I would just tell you that Avenue One is not an opponent of this project. Avenue One is a supporter of this project. However, we do have one small issue that has come to light here in the last month that we believe that we would like to have this project laid over for a couple of weeks so that we could potentially work out a resolution with the All Holy Spirit folks with Everett Place, with the city of Omaha, and it has to do with subdivision agreement and All Holy Spirits, All Holy Spirits' obligation to make any contributions to 192nd Street. There is some statements in the record that have indicated that, that have appeared in the public record that have indicated that Avenue One was a supporter, that there would be no contributions by the Everett Place project to 192nd Street. And that is not true. We do have a cost-sharing agreement, however, with, with Everett Place, with the SID, and I'm going to, I'm going to put up the language here that's, that's in that cost-sharing agreement that, that relates to specifically, I'm going to go ahead and read that. It's not very readable on the screen. The parties acknowledge and recognize that 192nd Street is currently in the process of being constructed, including but not limited to constructing that portion of 192nd Street which will connect to the Harney improvements. In the event SID 600 is required to contribute funds to any of the 192nd Street improvements, pursuant to a subdivision agreement between the city of Omaha and SID 600, SID 600 agrees to allow such funds to be directed to Douglas County Lead Agent for 192nd Street improvements to pay for portion of the 192nd Street improvements, or to be used to reimburse the parties who paid for the 192nd Street improvements. And in our subdivision agreement, the Avenue One subdivision agreement, we have language which is pretty typical when you have somebody that's performing some work that will provide some future benefit to projects. Most typically, it's without false sewers, but sometimes you have street improvements that are constructed on the front end that sometimes benefit adjacent areas. The city of Omaha in its subdivision agreement has never been willing to make a firm commitment that they will secure those contributions from adjacent property owners or projects, but has agreed to make efforts to secure funds as they're able to during the negotiations of the subdivision agreement. So in our cost-sharing arrangement, again, this is, was something that was at an arm's length negotiation between All Holy Spirits and between Avenue One, and is a good agreement and benefits both parties. They have access to 192nd Street. We were not going to be constructing the Harney Street improvements in conjunction with our first phase of Avenue One, which has been approved by city council. It was going to be in a later phase, but they needed that connection to 192nd Street, and we decided that rather than just build a partial section and incur costs twice, it would be mutually beneficial to projects to construct those improvements, and the two principles from both of those teams negotiated that agreement. But it was not done with the understanding by our team that the city would either waive or require any contributions to 192nd Street. And somehow along the way, there was some impression that Avenue One had made that commitment, and that's what we're objecting to solely. And we would just ask for a couple of weeks to see if there's something we can't work out with All Holy Spirits. We don't have a meeting next week, so that the next public hearing would be January 7, and we just respectfully ask for a two-week layover. And I don't know if Mr. Anderson has anything to add on behalf of the city, but I'd welcome his comments as well. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Is there a neutral?
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief Staff Mayor's Office. And yes, not speaking as an opponent. We've been working closely with both teams to try and come to resolve. There have been some items on the 192nd Street improvements that have been identified, and so we're trying to work through identifying how those improvements came to be, who's responsible for those costs, whether or not additional cost sharing needs to be paid by either All Holy or SID 600. So we continue to negotiate with both parties, although as we ran out of time here today, we have yet to come to a resolution as it exists today. So, but other than that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure where to start on this. So why don't I, Brent, if I could have you come up, maybe ask a couple of questions. So the, I find it interesting that we're, you know, this has been through planning board and we're at final plat, and this issue is just coming to light, so I, you'll probably want to address that at some point, but the, as I think I understand it from today, that there was an agreement with Avenue One to make the improvements to Harney Street, a portion of which is $350,000 out of $500,000, something along those lines, correct?
Yeah. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. So the total cost was around $400,000 to $500,000. The contribution from Avenue One to that entire project was $135,000.
Okay. And then?
SID 600 would pay the other $350,000.
$350,000, whatever. Okay. So, and it's, is it, as I understand it, is SID 600's position that the, you have a separate agreement with Avenue One, or is there, is there a separate agreement with Avenue One?
That's right. So as Jim laid out, there is a cost-sharing agreement that we negotiated with Avenue One for the betterment of six, seven months. We went through the alignment of how Harney Street could be improved temporarily with the two-lane, or we could just do the whole thing, which was a requirement of their final plat. I know it's a phase, it's down the road for them, but we just said, hey, we'll go ahead and construct that now. We'll pay $350,000. We're in, enter into this cost-sharing agreement, and Jim's right. I mean, the cost-sharing agreement says, in the event 600 is required to contribute to 192nd Street, then we'll do that. Well, I don't want to put words in anybody in staff's position or public works as to how they determine who's contributing to 192nd Street, but the reality is, is, number one, our development was not dictating what's going on 192nd Street. That was all done before we ever started our process. Number two, we have no control over the alignment or how the traffic counts up north are making or expanding 192nd Street. What we agreed to do was Harney Street. So I know when the city looks at this and they look at the debt ratios for SIDs, I know there's a tolerance around 4%, which is the debt ratio. We're pushing that on our development. I mean, this, this is a church project, and yes, there's two commercial lots, and yes, we may be bringing in some villas with a replat that has to come before you again, but as we sit today, we can't absorb much more from 192nd Street. So the $350,000, as Jason said, that's four to six times, depending on how you calculate the numbers, what we would conceivably have to contribute to anything towards 192nd Street. I say all that because I think that factored into the city's analysis as to whether they were going to require us to contribute to 192nd Street, which is why the subdivision agreement that's in front of you today clearly says we are not required to contribute to 192nd Street in connection with this final plat that is before you today. What I just saw for the first time in Jim's What I just saw for the first time in Jim's subdivision agreement is it says that the city will take and undertake a good faith effort to get folks like my client's development to contribute to 192nd Street. Clearly, the good faith effort is looking at all the costs. Is it feasible? Is it rational when you have a development like ours ponying up $350,000 to go contribute? I don't even know how much more money they may need for 192nd Street because the reality is, is we're not a party to any of those conversations. We have nothing to do with 192nd Street. We're not in the conversations with the City of Omaha. We've never been in the conversations with the City of Omaha. And to expect that we knew that they had some agreement with the City of Omaha, how would we ever know that? Secondly, when we were negotiating this cost sharing agreement, they had to have known that they had this arrangement with the City of Omaha. Why didn't they say to us, hey, are you factoring in any contribution to 192nd? This is all news to us. And Jim is right. We have had a really good relationship with Avenue One to get to where we are today. They've been very supportive and I think it's been a lot of back and forth and they have good representations and their conversations with the church have been very good. But when we get a call yesterday that they want to come object to this project, to us, it's a little perplexing because we felt though, as we did everything we had been asked, we went through the standard processes. And you're right, Brinker, I mean, we've gotten this far and now we're sitting here saying they want us to lay over so that we can go figure something out when in reality, I don't know what it is they want to figure out. We need our final plat done. We're trying to get public improvements installed. Delaying our project by two weeks puts our final plat, our subdivision agreement, a month, two months behind. And let's not forget, what this cost sharing agreement does is it obligates my client to have all the public improvements for 192nd Street and Harney Street done by next summer. The construction climate right now is way behind and we can't afford to lose any more time on moving forward with this final plat. What I told Avenue One representatives when we got the call was, hey, we have a replat that we were just in front of planning board for. As part of that replat, there is a recommendation that we contribute to 192nd. What I said is, hey, with respect to that replat, the replat's going to have 26 villas and we're bringing in that little Barker piece that Jason showed. We'll have a discussion with you as to what our car counts from that replat obligate us to contribute to 192nd Street. That's our commitment. We'll have that conversation with them. But with respect to what's in front of you today, I don't understand why holding this over for two weeks, how that benefits them and their discussions with the city. Because we've never been a party to those discussions.
So and I was going to ask too, because you mentioned, and I think Mr. Thielen brought up or showed that there, really what we're considering today is kind of a, it's not a square. If you had that to put up on the screen, that might be helpful. But that there is still two other parcels that would be included in the future replat that would be subject to the possibility of contributions to 192nd Street. Is that correct?
It's clear in the rec report for the replat. So again, as we sit today, sorry, Jason, I'm drawing this. This is the property we're talking about. This is the final plat that's before you today. The replat that's coming before you in the future will be for these villas. It's, I know it's kind of hard to see, but there's 26 villas over here and then what we call the Barker piece, which is a newly acquired property right there. And I'm sorry, and this Montessori, which is obviously not the church. That still needs to come before council for approval. And what you're hearing us say today is, hey, we understand it's in the rec report for that replat. We need to have a discussion, but that's not before you today. The final plat, this property is before you. Why it's important is we want to get going on all the public infrastructure right here and all the public infrastructure right here. It's taken us a lot of time, as Jason said, three years to get to this point. We don't see the need to hold this over for two weeks because these discussions can still go on.
So help me out here. So what's the difference then between maybe what Avenue One is asking for a layover for consideration of a contribution from what we're considering today? And the difference between that and the future projects that you're just outlining there for the potential replat?
What's the, I'm not sure I'm pulling.
I know. That was a horrible way to ask it. So what we're doing here today, your position is, or SID 600's position is that any contributions have already been made or that you're not obligated for further contributions for 192nd Street.
I understand your question.
So I'm asking, what's the difference between that today and then in the future for the replat, for the Barker piece and the villas? And they are going to have the conversation about contributions to 192nd?
So I'll answer your first question first. So the contribution, if there is anything to any public improvements as far as right of ways, our contribution, what we agreed to with the city in our subdivision agreement that's before you today, is we are doing enough work on Harney Street, investing $350,000 that doing that is in lieu of anything we'd have to contribute for 192nd, for this final plat that's before you. With respect to the replat, which is that second phase, yes, that's my point is, we will have a conversation with the city about what is reasonable as far as a contribution to 192nd with respect to the properties that we're replating. We feel though, as though our contribution to Harney Street, $350,000, not having to go through the eminent domain process, granting, I mean, there's, what you're not knowing is there's land in here that we're granting for free. So we're giving up that land. That was all part of the cost sharing agreement that we have with Avenue One. We feel as though that is enough for anything related to 192nd Street for this final plat.
Okay, so now, thanks Brent. And Jim, could I have you?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I, Jim, he had said something about a, someone had made representations to the city about Avenue One was signed off on. I want to be clear, that wasn't our party and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. We certainly weren't telling anybody down at the city, hey, Avenue One has signed off on this, put it in the rec report. Because we didn't. We have the cost sharing agreement, but that was the only sort of conversations we have with the city in that respect.
Okay, thanks Brent.
Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle.
Thanks, Jim. So I guess part of the question would then be, after hearing Mr. Beller's comments as to, I guess, the question is, seems like their position is that they've made the contributions that would somehow be associated with 192nd Street along the Harney Street improvements. And that future parcels that would come in after the fact would then be subject to the 190, a contribution, potential contribution to 192nd Street. So help me out on your side of the equation then.
Sure. Well, let me first of all say, this is not something we wanted to publicly debate today. So that's, I want to make that clear, that we have some discussions going on with the city regarding our project on 192nd Street that are unresolved as far as some costs. And I don't want to bring that into the conversation today. And that's why we wanted the couple of weeks to help get that resolved and then have final resolution with those, with the All Holy Spirits Everett Place folks. So I guess I'm not taking a position of advocacy that the city, as to what that number is, that they should contribute to 192nd Street. I don't know that. I haven't done the, I don't know what the city's policy is for how they determine contributions to arterial streets. Generally, I know how we did it for Avenue One. R and R and Avenue One have some very large cost sharing agreements in place where we're sharing somewhere north of $11 million in costs for 192nd Street. And some of the street improvements that are off of 190th Street, including Farnham and Harney. So as to how that formula works, can be based on traffic counts. It can be based on front footage. There's different ways to do that. We quite frequently work on our local agreements with the county where it's based on front footage. And the developments that have front footage will pay proportion of contributions. So again, I don't want to get in that, I don't have the numbers or how to analyze what's fair or not fair for them to contribute and how you should weigh in the Harney Street contribution. But I can tell you that our negotiations and discussions were solely regarding Harney Street and really had nothing to do with what's fair or not fair with 192nd Street. So I'll leave it at that, if that answers your question, Brinker.
Okay, thank you.
No further lights. Oh, there goes one. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, I don't know. Troy, maybe you could answer this for me. While everybody was talking, I was trying to go through these agreements to try and find it. Does our vote today stop or negate any future discussions that you're having now? Or do these agreements in any way lock one party in or out of something?
So if I can refer you to the subdivision improvement agreement subsection H, there is, there is some concern over some of the language within the subdivision agreement. And I'll just read it for the record. It's the last sentence in subsection H. Well, the first part of section H talks about the subdivider has entered into a binding cost share agreement with the developers of the Avenue Development, yada, yada, yada. And that's everything that you've heard here today. The last sentences, last two sentences of section H read, "In consideration of the Harney Street improvements, subdivider, its successors and assigns shall not be obligated to contribute any additional funds for any future arterial road improvements for 192nd Street. City agrees that subdivider and SID 600 will have met all current and future financial obligations towards any road improvements of 192nd Street and shall not be required to contribute additional funds." And so that's where I think both parties have kind of read some of this language. Maybe it's a little vague on commitments. It sounds like you've heard from the applicant here today that they're willing to further the conversation of a contribution with a further replat whereby the opposing party has some concerns over if the council votes on the approval today that somehow that waives the applicant's future contribution. So again, it's just kind of some.
My concern is, is what is the actual effect of today's vote on the issue at hand that everybody is down here talking about? And what I'm saying, the language you just read to me didn't sound vague. I mean, it sounded very clear to me. It said, I don't know if President Jerome will agree with me, but that language didn't sound vague.
I was still humming the Christmas song.
It doesn't, it doesn't really sound vague to me. So I guess in lieu of caution, I would, I would almost want to lay this over. I don't want to delay the project for Mr. Beller's clients. But I can see that that language could be problematic. And if we approved it, then really both parties could walk away because the language is already in this agreement, correct? Once we vote on this, the city will sign it and it'll be done.
Correct. And we even discussed the option of, you know, could we all go on the record here today and say, you know, based on the language I just provided, in order to not hold up the project, is there a scenario by which, either by way of amendment? Not that we want to amend this in any way because then we're getting into wordsmithing and everything else.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I don't want to become an attorney for the two parties or mediator or arbitrator, whatever that may be. That's not my role.
Correct.
I don't want to hold up the project. But it sounds to me like there's some language in there that needs to be potentially dealt with.
And that's where we ran out of time. And I don't want to speak for the opposition, but again, I think you've heard, they don't oppose the project. They don't want to oppose that. They just want to make sure that, that the city is following through on their obligation. As we entered into a commitment with Avenue One, that we would in good faith effort continue to obtain as many contributions to the 192nd Street improvement as possible. I think their issue is, are we continuing to do that as a city? Are we continuing to get all of the appropriate contributions? Or have we sort of failed to uphold our end of that agreement by introducing this kind of language? I don't think the opposition is trying to delay the project either. I think they're just trying to make sure that any contributions to the 192nd Street are not being lost by the passing of this subdivision improvement agreement as it's written today.
But could it be that they don't own, that they don't know anymore?
That is, and that's where we just, we ran out of time. We don't know. We're going to have to do some more work on, you know, what's the impact of the All Holy Saints Church project and the SID 600 project? What is the impact on the 192nd Street? We may come to find out that they don't owe anymore. We may come to find out that they owe, you heard it from, you know, maybe in the ballpark of $50,000 to $100,000.
So who makes that decision? The city?
The city does, yes.
So are, are you saying that maybe you need more time to make that determination? Because you're, well, you're clearly, you're not willing to provide that opinion today.
I'm trying not to delay the project either, yes. So yes, we have some work that we need to do to identify the appropriate cost sharing, but at the same time, we're also trying not to hold up the project. And that's where we came to this impasse today. And we apologize for putting that on you all here today. We just, we ran out of time.
Well, and especially for like, you know, really hearing it for the first time what the arguments are, which is why I'm trying to page through 45 pages of an agreement. I can't even find where we're disagreeing. Okay. Mr. Beller, could I just ask you one quick question?
Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road.
So now it's a quarter to three and I think, I think I now understand what we're.
I don't.
Where the disagreement is. So is your position that you're willing to, you'd be willing to accept whatever the city told you you owed? Or are you saying, we already had this agreement, we don't know anything and we're going to fight it to the nail?
The truth of the matter is, I have no idea. My client has no idea what costs they're talking about on 192nd. We've never been involved in whatever the redesign going on 192nd Street. We don't know. We agreed to do Harney Street because we, that's our entry and exit.
Right.
We've never been a part of 192nd Street. They can continue these costs. I mean, Troy's point is, I'm on the record saying, we have a replat that's coming before you all again. I understand that currently, as this is drafted, it says 192nd, we won't have to contribute anything further. But that's for this, this final plat that's before you. If we do anything else, like any other replat, we have to amend our subdivision agreement. We have to go through that process.
Although I don't like amending contracts, especially on a whim, but maybe you could agree to include that line on that paragraph H that says the parties pursuant to, the parties at the replat at the Omaha City Council meeting on December.
That's fine. I mean, the reality is, we just don't want the final plat to be held up any further. We've gone through this for so long to get to this point. Holding us up is just to kick in the shorts in some respects because we've gotten to this point. We've had lots of conversations with them. And then we just find out about this yesterday, that there's conversations apparently going on with the city based on new designs on 192nd Street, which we have no party to. I mean, we're not a part of those discussions. So, you know, we kind of feel like, gosh, really wish we would have known that you were having these issues long before, the day before we're coming to council on our final plat. Why we're, you know, as the SID, we're getting all of our resolutions and necessity ready. We're getting all of our plans for all the public improvements. There's a lot of collateral damage by holding stuff up today. You'll have another bite at us when we come through with the replat.
And what you're saying is, whatever money that the city may decide, and it may be zero. I mean, according to Mr. Anderson, it may be zero. And what you're saying is, don't hold this up. Assess those costs on the final plat of the other properties, the villas and the.
For the replat, that's right.
And the one that actually abuts to 192nd.
Correct.
The little corner.
Correct.
I think you called it Barker.
The Barker.
Okay. And that's what you would be put on the record today. Don't hold this project up because there's future projects that you could potentially attach if there is any that's owed to those projects.
So yes, is the answer. And then also, there's other cost sharing that we're doing with Avenue One. So we got to play nice with each other because there's other MED expenses that we're sharing. I mean, that's why Jim said, yes, we're getting along. He's not in opposition, but at the same time, we got to keep going. We can't delay any further on this project. We just can't.
And you're, and you're wanting to pass this, does it mean so that you can go, oh, look, I have this language in here, so I, we don't owe you anything? You're saying you have a, you have a future waiting for me to have to pay these if I owe them?
This is not the last sign. Hopefully, I'm in front of this council. So my word to you is yes, we will have those discussions. Let's just get past this final plat. Let's have the conversation with the replat.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Well, we have another light. Councilmember Harding.
I'll try to be brief. Councilmember Gray. It seems to me that the developer and the SID have negotiated this agreement with the city where it clearly says that the city agrees subdivider and SID 600 have met all current finance, future financial obligations et cetera toward 192nd. So I just want to be clear, Councilmember Melton, that what I think Mr. Beller is saying is, yes, we, as a replat, when we come back in, we'll look at that or be open to that. But it may not necessarily, I don't know that. But it may not necessarily, I don't know that we need to include that language in here, because it's, because of the replat, that would happen normally anyway.
That, that's correct. That's how, that's what I am saying.
Okay.
It's been motioned in second. Before we take the roll call, if I could have both parties stand up at the mic for a second. And Troy, you're all very experienced at what you do. And, and bringing this issue to the light of day for the first time at the council, rather than alerting us to this fact at the pre-council, or even before then, is what the president of the council expects out of this experienced group. I'm not pleased that, that this is just being mentioned right here. Thank you. Roll call.
Harding. To approve. Milton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 to 15 are approved, seven to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 132nd and Ford Streets from LC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hello, Rob Woodling, Foundations Development, 1-886-SOUTH-126STREET. I am the purchaser, have the option to purchase this particular property. Our plan is to do some mixed income senior housing on the property. The, this is part of a larger project with Fairway Foods that has come through the council previously, a couple of weeks ago, where it was rezoned. And so this would be the kind of back corner of that particular development. So be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Milton. Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the proposed extremely blighted areas for the area generally bounded by 72nd Street on the west, Harrison Street on the south, the Missouri River on the east, and Interstate 680 on the north.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I will describe how the city has determined the boundaries of the extremely blighted areas. And then I'll turn the podium over to Senator Wayne and Trevor Fitzgerald to talk more about LB 86 and how it relates to the extremely blighted areas. LB 86 was passed this May by the state legislature, and it added a definition called the extremely blighted areas to the community development law. I won't read that definition, but I will just briefly paraphrase. It is in section 18 dash 2103 subsection 13, and it starts out by saying extremely blighted areas means areas in substandard and blighted area in which, and then it goes and says A and B. And those are two quantitative measures that look at demographic information to qualify that area as an extremely blighted area. So when the City of Omaha received notification that this had passed, the Law Department, Planning Department, and others looked at, okay, what is our responsibility? What do we need to do? And what we determined first was to look at what are the existing community redevelopment areas? This is a map that's been on our TIF website for probably a couple of years, a year or two. So this isn't anything new. The purple shaded areas are the community redevelopment areas. And by definition in the law, community redevelopment areas are areas that have already been determined to be substandard and blighted. So instead of saying substandard and blighted, we say community redevelopment areas or CRAs. CRAs basically look at the physical conditions of geographic areas, and they're looking at building conditions, infrastructure. That definition, community redevelopment areas, substandard and blighted, are also looking at demographic factors. Unemployment is one of those. So as we looked at, where are our CRAs? Then we look back at the definition, and as I mentioned, we looked at the two quantitative measures. One of them is that the unemployment rate, the average unemployment rate is 200% of the average rate of the, in the state. So we took the 2017 American Community Survey five-year estimate. It was the most current at that time. We used that census data, and we use the, use that data at the census block group level. And the reason we used it, the census block group level data, is because most of our CRAs were determined, and the boundaries were determined, using that level of data. So we looked at that data to determine, okay, where is this unemployment rate at? What areas in this CRA have the 20, 200%? The other quantitative measure is that the average poverty rate is 20% or greater for the total census tract. So you have a higher unemployment rate that we're looking at and a 20% poverty rate that we're looking at in the CRAs. The result was this map, which is in your packet. The red crosshatched areas represent the eastern half of Omaha, but the red crosshatched areas represent where the community redevelopment areas are currently. And then the result were the green areas underneath are the extremely blighted areas. So those are the areas that, one, were already community redevelopment areas, and then, two, they met what the definition says in the law in terms of having a higher unemployment rate and having the 20% or greater poverty rate. So that was how we determined what the extremely blighted areas would be. And with that, I guess I would like to turn it over to Senator Wayne and Trevor to answer other questions you may have. And I'll be here to answer any questions, but would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Senator Justin Wayne, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chairman Jerem and members of the city council. For the record, my name is Justin Wayne, J-U-S-T-I-N-W-A-Y-N-E, and I represent District 13, which is North Omaha and Northeast Douglas County. I reside at 8937 North 56th Avenue Circle. I'm testifying this afternoon in support of Resolution 1164, which would designate certain areas of the city as extremely blighted pursuant to the community development law. Earlier this year, the legislature passed LB 86, a bill I introduced that was designed to encourage development of affordable housing and spur homeownership in some of the hardest-hit areas throughout the state. LB 86 contains two primary changes. First, in the beginning of 2020 tax year, it provides an income tax credit for individuals who purchase a residence in the area that has been designated as extremely blighted underneath the community development law. Second, it provides funding preferences for grants and loans under the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for affordable housing projects in areas that have been designated as extremely blighted. In order for any taxpayers to be eligible to claim a home buyer's tax credit for, or for a developer or nonprofit housing company to be eligible for funding preferences, the areas must be designated as extremely blighted first by the city. Under state law, an extremely blighted area is, has to meet the standard of substandard and blighted, but it also has to have two other requirements. The average rate of employment has to be at least 200% of the statewide employment, and the average poverty rate has to exceed 20%. Effectively, the term extremely blighted signifies the areas that have the highest unemployment and the highest poverty throughout the state. Again, we have to make sure that these areas are already designated at first. And to give a, a concrete example of, of kind of how this works, for the tax years of 2025, which is six-year program, a pilot program throughout, created by this law, a person qualifies for a not, $5,000 non-refundable tax credit. In order to receive this, the person must make the residence its individual or its primary residence and cannot be purchased from a family member. This was put in specifically to make sure gentrification does not happen in North Omaha and South Omaha, that if somebody who wants to take advantage of this $5,000 tax credit does so by living in that residence for at least five years. In the event the individual claiming the credit or sells otherwise or transfers it the residence and stops using the residence as a primary within those five years, the credit is subject to recapture, which is unique in the law, but the legislature agrees that it wants to make sure that gentrification does not happen. The Department of Revenue administers the tax credit, and those forms should be roughly available at the end of, or fall of 2020. You are not the only one who are considering this. City of Lincoln is starting to propose and are going through those rounds, and so is Grand Island. And what was weird about when we pulled up these statistics, when we were trying to concentrate on North and South Omaha, Hastings, Grand Island, Thurston County, other areas have just as much poverty and just as much high unemployment and need for affordable housing. And that's how we were able to move this through the legislature without any objection. And with that, I can answer any questions if that's appropriate. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, did you wish time? Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Jen Bauer, 5501 Leavenworth Street, Omaha, 68106. I am here today because while I agree that we do need affordable housing in the community, the way that the boundaries for this were recommended is kind of off the mark. If you, it's a very hard map to read, but if you look, there are areas in the Gold Coast, the Jaws and Castle area, and Blackstone that are being designated as extremely blighted based on 2010 census data. All right. I'm not saying that we don't need this, although I fail to understand how a refundable tax credit, revocable tax credit, is going to lend to the housing situation in the City of Omaha for affordable housing. I think that this was a rushed effort to set up the boundaries. I think that if it's passed now, and then in 2020, when the expansion of the TIF project goes in to go for 20 years on the length of TIF, which should be in the ballot in November, I think that it's a, it's a recipe for disaster. And that's my opinion.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I thought I was on top of things, but I guess I wasn't. This caught me by surprise, and it kind of gives me the impression the city's about to move in on me. Maybe resettle me somewhere else so they can build something. Very close to my street, maybe I'm in there, and I'm waiting for the inspectors. But I have some questions. Can I apply for tax increment financing? Will you lower my property taxes because I'm in a blighted area? Is this at the behest of the state legislature or what? Where'd this come up? It seems like a lot of businesses in this area down here are now in a blighted area after a lot of redevelopment has already happened. And now we're declaring it blighted. I think that like that lady mentioned, even the Blackstone is now blighted. Is this not maybe a special law, which is unconstitutional in our state legislature's constitution, says you will not make special laws? Just saying that the state government approves it or that it's okay under home charter rule doesn't make it necessarily not special law. And it's time for the citizens to maybe raise awareness. Go out and drive this area and look at what they're calling as blighted. Is it, is this also maybe at the behest of community partners and developers? It's kind of like somebody saying, here's looking at your property, kid. Or are we trying to make room for orbit? How far are people willing to work, to walk, to, to make it to orbit? There was a time where you could walk maybe a block and catch a bus downtown from just about anywhere in the city. That's not possible now. But you have, so you have to live on Dodge Street and walk all the way from Coming. I'm sorry to be such a negative person, but there's just not enough public transparency in all of this.
Going to need you to wrap up.
I kind of wonder if the people helping decide what's blighted or isn't is maybe, you know, the neighborhood associations, the community partners such as OTAC, Restore Dignity, professors and students.
Your time's expired.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon, Councilman Mark Vondrasik, 555 South 34th Street. I think you're all aware that I have some criticisms of housing policy in the state of Nebraska and Omaha. I think this is an example of top-down solutions that benefit property owners instead of working-class solutions that benefit workers from the beginning. I prefer to see housing solutions that guarantee housing is a human right to all people versus patchwork fixes and tax credits that only benefit people who already have the capital to make those kind of purchases. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
Luis Jimenez, 2205 North 24th Street. Good morning, or good afternoon, councilmembers. I am very interested in what's going on with 17. I spoke with Senator Wayne about changing maps that has to do with blighted areas. So I appreciate his efforts and tying benefits, housing benefits to areas that need it. As I far, as far as I understand it, this is having the city council move in tandem with state statutes that he proposed benefits last year. Although I am here as an opponent, even though I support Justin's, Wayne's work, Senator Wayne's work on this. So I'm going to use the map here again to make a point. If we look at tract, at tract 12 and tract, tract 16, you've got tract 12 here, 16, they're both incomplete tracts, covered by the green shaded area, which represents extremely blighted areas. I am not convinced that tract 16 should at all have green. I think that tract 12 should have the whole area in green. It seems to me this is a very basic map, and I keep hearing that redevelopment laws and the state legislator working with blighted areas have already been defined. First, when a blighted area is first designated, or substandard area is first designated, then we can start looking at how we provide benefits and help the working class. But we first have to be there. Maybe that's the issue. We need to be moving at a secondary map, if there isn't one. Maybe there is a third map that the legislator has already looked at, so that tract, tract 16, or yeah, tract 16 is not at all considered a blighted area or substandard area. Those are the issues that you guys are dealing with, and you can't do anything about. That I, I'm convinced that where, that's where the problem lies in revitalization here in Omaha. I assume you're going to pass this because it's going to help with Senator Wayne's law. So I, you know, but take a look at the, the maps, even if it's provided by the state, and think about how you can change it. How are you looking at the data? Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Wayne, if you would, please.
Do I have to retype my name?
Yes.
Justin Wayne, 8937 North 56th Avenue Circle.
So welcome. I appreciate the work that you do, including this LB 86. Just one comment and then a question to help me clarify a little bit of this. One is, I heard a lot from my constituents, more than I thought I would, and many of them came from the people who have worked hard and been in the House and raised their family for 40 years. When you say blighted, they take offense to it. CRAs a little less, maybe they don't understand that. But they're, they're truly disappointed by saying, now I live in an extremely... now I live in an extremely blighted area. And I know that's just wording, but to some, that means a lot, so obviously, we're not going to change that, and that was just a comment, but there's two parts of this, and I understand the home ownership part, you have to be there for so long, it's to help, you know, obviously, properties that are maybe in distress. You move in, you get this credit, and great, but there's the other part, and I thought you mentioned it, and I've been trying to look through it here to see. Tell me the advantage to development in this newly, and I'll say it, extremely blighted area. What is the credit for a developer in one of this, these tracks? And I won't get on the census track exactly, because we know that's probably going to change with the new census coming out.
So first, I do not like the term extremely blighted either. However, I'm bound by our constitution, and because we are the only state in the, in the Union that has TIF in its constitution, the word blighted is in our constitution and is defined by the legislature, but the word blighted is, substandard and blighted is in our constitution. So from a body standpoint, we are trying to use the same language, because I'm targeting a inner part of that blighted area. That's how we got to extremely. I wish there was a different word, but there is a ballot initiative for extremely blighted in 2020 to help correct some of that, but it's, it's on the ballot. I mean, it's in our constitution. So LB 88 is comprised, LB 86 is comprised of both LB 86 and LB 88, which are both my bills. One of them, LB 86, was designed for Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and if you're a developer, you can apply for a grant, and you've already, always before, could apply for a grant, but when you have 100 grants across the state, maybe 1,000, there really is no preference. So what we did in LB 86 was give you a preference, that if you are developing in an extremely blighted area, you now can jump to the front of the line, because we are trying to develop those extremely blighted areas. LB 88 was the tax credit piece that folded into LB 86 that said, if you buy a house, you can get a non-refundable $5,000 tax credit. And again, this is only from 20 to 2026, so it's a six-year pilot, and if it's not working, we're going to go back to the drawing board and find something else. But that's how the affordable housing piece comes. And long-term, we have more bills this year. We are trying to add more tools for the cities, particularly the city of Omaha, to deal with it extremely blighted area. So we're trying to define it and then circle more tools around it. For example, we are looking at this year's sales and use tax in extremely blighted. I don't know if we'll do the bill this year, but the goal is to give yourselves more tools. If you talk to your planning department, which I hear from quite a bit down in legislature, we are hamstrung on our ability to do economic development because of our constitution. We only have a couple tools, and so we are trying to figure out, within the framework of our constitution, to do more development around these areas. And quite honestly, the reason we are doing extremely blighted is because throughout the state, we have areas that some might designate as not blighted, that are considered blighted for TIF purposes. This bill that I passed, these two bills, have nothing to do with TIF. It just happens to be that the language is found in that section of law. That's all it is. It has nothing to do with TIF at all.
Thank you. That clarified it for me, and again, I appreciate what you do, but I promise if somebody brings us back and it's extremely, extremely blighted, we're probably not going to support it, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Senator Wayne, thank you for, and thank everybody in the legislature. Affordable housing is a critical issue in this state. It is a critical issue in Omaha, and it is something we need to address. You mentioned one, that there is a, there is a sunset on this. The reason for the sunset, again, say that for me.
It's a pilot program, and that's how I sold it to the body of, let's see if it works. I'm the first one to say, I don't know what the silver bullet is for affordable housing, but we're going to keep trying things in a pilot manner to see what works and what doesn't work.
There is no silver bullet, but anyway, let's, that, that's for sure. We've tried all kinds of things. Secondly, does that, would, would, who, who all is, would nonprofits be eligible to do this as well in terms of development, or are we just talking about for-profit developers? Tell me what, kind of who's eligible for this, or is it individuals?
So part of the bill was Senator Vargas's bill, which freed up nonprofits and for-profits either work together or separately to apply for grants. Where it used to be before, at the state level, you had to partner with the for-profit if you were a nonprofit, and now we're freeing it up to allow people to divvy either way, to whatever suits them best. Our goal in this bill was just trying to give more access to grants and dollars, because we know at the state level, particularly at the Department of Economic Development, we're having a hard time spending those dollars in key areas for affordable housing in which they're designated for.
Okay, but it does give nonprofits an opportunity to, to access some of those tax credits?
Absolutely. Not the tax credits, the grants.
The grants.
Grants and loans, yes.
The grants and loans.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Melton.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Gray.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, an application to consider a Class IK liquor license for Kona Grill located at 295 North 170th Street.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Tim O'Neal with O'Neal Heinrich Law Firm, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Kona Grill, they're seeking a Class I and a Class K license. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Gray.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 19 through 26 were held on December 10, 2019. Roll call.
Harding. Melton.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Gray.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 27 through 42 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have someone help me out with number 33, dealing with Route 168?
Public Works.
Public Works.
The city engineer is working his way to the microphone.
Todd Pitzer, Public Works.
Thank you for coming down, Todd. This is a key street in my area, and I'd just like to have a little bit more information. Are you telling me you're going to build that for $122,000? That'll be complete street between Q and?
No, we're not going to build the street for $122,000. That's for some additional right-of-way help to allow us to move into the next phases toward construction. So the, the cost, as you know, is in the tens of millions of dollars for these segments of street.
Well, there's, a lot of people are getting a little bit confused, because we did 168 on the other side of Dodge. Now we're going to work on, a little bit more on the southern part. Could you just give us a timeline when it looks like this area may be, you know, what it looks like in the near future?
Sure. The project is broken into two projects. So 168th Street, essentially from Pacific to Center is the first project that you'll see being worked on. That one, you'll start seeing construction next summer. So in 2020, you'll see utilities move in there, and you'll see some work, particularly in the low spot just south of Pacific Street, where we've got to replace that box culvert and do some, some, some work in there and, and get that all prepared for a future raisin of that elevation to tie in. So that'll be in 2020, you'll see that project start. That'll be a two-year project. So in 2021, the next project further to the south, which essentially goes from Center to Q, will begin in 2021. Same type of a thing, you'll see utilities move in. That project involves a bridge down across Lake Zarenski in that low-lying area. That project will also be a two-year project, so it'll be in 2023, late 2023, before we hope that one will wrap up, and you may possibly see, as you do with some of our projects around town, depending on whether some work going to 24 with regard to landscaping, sodding, seeing those types of things on that project. But we're close, but we're next year on the first one and two years.
Two years on the area that I'm talking about. I'm really curious on the Zarenski, the bridge there. Will you widen that bridge? Is that what's going to happen?
There'll be a second bridge constructed that'll, that'll handle, so there'll be, there's two lanes today, there'll be four lanes in the future. So there'll just be a twin to it.
Okay, and that road, here's another question to ask, that will remain open throughout the construction?
It will not. There will be pieces of the road that will be temporarily closed during construction on both projects. For the most part, we're going to try to keep traffic moving through that area, but for example, on the first project between Pacific and Center, that low area where we got to put in the box culvert, that, that area is going to be adjusted to grade approximately five feet, and so that is going to close for a period of time as we come in and adjust those grades and get those done. So there will be complete closures at some points on those projects. We've got, if you go to our Keep Omaha Moving webpage, it kind of shows the phasing, it kind of breaks down those things and can help the public in general look at how that works.
That's all I, I just want to make sure my constituents have a better understanding.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's approved. Roll call.
Harding. Melton.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Gray.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 43, an ordinance to accept the bid from Chopper's Lawn Service for grounds maintenance mowing of rights away in the amount of $186,645.60 per year for a two-year period ending November 30th, 2021.
The public hearing on item 43 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 44, an ordinance to approve a price agreement for an estimated annual cost of $30,000 for the 2020 calendar year with three optional one-year extensions for Public Works Street Maintenance Division uniforms.
The public hearing on item 44 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 45, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with MAPPA in the amount of $106,372 for regional digital map products.
The public hearing on item 45 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 46, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of the class specification entitled Visitor Services Manager to Director of Visitor Services. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on item 46 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 47, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the salary range of the employment classification entitled Human Resources Information Systems Manager. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on item 47 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve a sublease acknowledgement in agreement with the Omaha Performing Arts Society for a parking lease to the Park Eight Parking Garage.
The public hearing on item 48 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 49, an ordinance providing for an amendment to the levy of a general business occupation tax for the Capital District.
The public hearing on item 49 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the Capital District. With me today is Mike Moylan, and also my law partner Brett Beller, who helped me out with this particular ordinance. Really, there's three components to the ordinance. It's increasing the general business occupation tax on the retail hotel and restaurant businesses from half of a percent to one and a half percent, so effectively, there's a 1% increase on those types of items, and that's in, within the Capital District proper. As far as the south Capital District, which is everything south of Capital that's within the boundaries of the Capital District, that is going from 3/10 of a percent to 75 or 3/4 of a percent, and it's an increase of about 45/10 of a percent on that. And then, lastly, there's one change from the original ordinance, and that is to create this other category on hotel group events, so weddings and such that occur within the Marriott would be at 1.25%, and that was at their request, but they're, you know, they find that acceptable. With this request, we're seeking to increase the general business occupation tax for the promissory note that's funded by the general business occupation tax to $17 million from $10 million that was approved back in 2017. Again, based upon these increases, for example, if you spent $100 at the Capital District on a retail sell, sale, that would mean it would be an extra dollar as far as what would be contributed to this general business occupation tax fund. That all goes to defray TIF-eligible expenses that were incurred within the Capital District. So this is a way for the developer to recoup an additional $7 million of TIF-eligible expenses that were already noted way back when this original redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement were approved by the council. Just two things to note, we are not starting the clock over, so when it, the original ordinance for the general business occupation tax, when it was approved in 2017, it runs 20 years from 2017, so we're not starting the clock over. Also, there was accrued interest on the original $10 million that were just going away, and we're starting at $17 million in principal and going to accrue the interest from here on out. So that's really the long and short of it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to adopt the amended and restated park covenants of the Heartland of America Park.
The public hearing on item 50 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 51, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement for five years with Douglas County for the operation of the Joint 911 Emergency Communication System.
The public hearing on item 51 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 52, First Star Fiber Corporation appeals rejection of their bid from October 23rd, 2019, for the OPW 53624 Omaha Recycling Processing Contract, 2021 to 2026.
Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So last week, we all expressed a lot of concern about the status of our recycling contract and our processing contract that we're talking about here today, and we observed that it's December 17th now, but under our current arrangement, nothing was secured for January 1st in the short term, let alone the long term, should this bid be rejected, which is the issue in front of us here today. And as I indicated at the time, I'm not opposed to seeking a smarter bid or seeking a contract that does better on pricing, and that might be more innovative, and it has a 10-year timeframe instead of the five-year timeframe that we're dealing with, so that we are demonstrating our commitment to recycling. But I also indicated I'm not rejecting any bid unless I'm assured those services and recyclables won't be disrupted in the short term, and that we have demonstrated our long-term commitment to it. So a few questions for Mr. Tyler, and I think also Mr. Gubels. We had some conversation in pre-council today to this effect, and I think there has been some developments since last week that I'd like you to explain to everybody and go on the record about.
Sure. Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works, and I'm the Assistant Director for Environmental Services. We understood that you were asking for us to see if we could come to terms to provide for the uninterrupted service for 2020, and so, and I'm going to submit this for record. I read some of these things this morning at city council, and I provided a copy to Jim Dowding, but it was pretty late, so I'm not sure if you have it. So I'll go ahead and provide this to the clerk. And since that time of the meeting this morning, Dale has put together some notes on this that I went ahead and took my notes along with the notes from Dale, and I provided those to our law department so they could start working on the addendum that will be part of this. But, but I'll go ahead and start, and if you have any questions, and then if you have any questions from Dale. So the city of Omaha and First Star Fiber, we had a series of meetings and phone calls after the December 10th council meeting. The purpose of that was to come to agreement prior to this meeting to allow for First Star to continue recycling under the current contract. And as you're aware, that contract remains in effect till December 31st, 2020, or until such time as we can come to terms for a new contract. So late yesterday afternoon, we agreed to, in principle, the terms of an amendment that will have to be approved by you. We'll hope to get that amendment out to you at some time in January. So we agreed to negotiate in good faith terms for So we agreed to negotiate in good faith terms for them to continue this service with those terms to be effective January one, two thousand and twenty. And those terms that we agreed to in principle, and we have to work out the details, are as follows. Payment of one hundred and ten dollars per ton, the retail rate that is charged by First Star Fiber for the processing of residential mixed recyclable materials on normal dry weather days. This amount was offered in a letter to First Star from the city dated December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. The compensation, that compensation will be adjusted up or down, if necessary, on a quarterly basis until a new contract is in place. The second term that we agreed to is to provide for additional compensation to process materials when wet weather is a factor at a rate of a hundred and forty-three dollars a ton. And so Dale's proposed some things on this. We have to work those details out, but we understand that there's a cost because of our open bins that he doesn't have with the covered carts that we will be moving to within the next year, that that material is, can be considered contaminated, or at least it has to be treated differently for him to process. We understand there's, there's an additional cost, in particular, there's a concern with our current contractor running short on staff, that that causes times when he has to bring in staff on Saturdays to make up for delays in the process of hauling coming to his facility. So we've agreed to accommodate those additional staff times that are outside of his normal contract, and we'll work out, we'll work out the details of that one as well. Separate from the processing contract is the contract associated with the drop-off sites. And that contract will be awarded to FCC in the future, and they will take that on, on or before January one of two thousand and twenty-one, when they assume their future hauling contract. They were the low bidder of Bid Package B, which we are going to put forward to you sometime in January. Until that time that FCC takes that contract over, we will continue to work with First Star Fiber to maintain those sites. There's been a number of issues with the increased cost of hauling from those sites. There's been a number of issues with illegal dumping of those sites that are not necessarily within his control. We agreed to help try to manage that illegal dumping issue with him. We agreed also to allow for him to, on the hauling side, submit us receipts along with an appropriate administrative, administrative fee to deal with the additional costs associated with that contract, which will remain in effect until at such time FCC takes that contract over. So, so based on that information and, and on the information that we have on the number of tons that are coming in to his facility, and we believe that tonnage will stay the same through two thousand and twenty because we're not moving to the new carts yet, you know, we, we believe that puts us in line with an overall price if it were go, if it were to go the full year, which we don't believe it will, but in the range of that kind of one point seven to two million dollar cost that we have mentioned previously that we thought was appropriate for the cost for two thousand and twenty. So we believe we're in line with those costs and what we've worked out with Dale.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gubels, would you like to add to that from your perspective?
Dale Gubels, twelve eleven Cork Drive, Papillion. Really have nothing more to add concerning what Jim just laid out. We're in agreement with it in principle, and, and we will work through some of the details to make sure it works. We're pleased that we can keep recycling going. There's a lot of people who obviously are worried, not just our employees, but the general public about whether or not recycling could continue. And I, I think we've worked out some ideas here, and we'll continue to have those available for you in January to consider as well.
Good. So no change in materials, no change in drop-off sites. A citizen won't see any difference in service come January first?
No, they really shouldn't.
And we, can, I'm a little bit nervous that we have this in letter form but not, you know, actually in agreement yet. Can you both guarantee me on the record today this will come to fruition in January to the, to the City Council?
And, and one of the reasons that, where I immediately forward this, my document as long as with Dale's document to our law department is so we could immediately start to work on that addendum, you know, right now, so we could get that in front of you as soon as we could get that on the City Council. So yes.
And Mr. Gubels, same, same pledge?
The, the one thing I would like to have on the record, though, is I am concerned about two thousand and twenty-one because the timeframe to get to that new contract and the carts, as Jim pointed out, is going to increase. And there's construction, there's equipment, there are things that we need to do, and we won't begin starting on those until we see what the, the new bid requirements are and, and, you know, we will consider bidding when we know what those requirements are, but time is getting of the essence here. And just wanted to let everyone know about that again, and I'm sure Jim agrees with me on that as well.
Yeah, I agree with that, too, and feel some urgency around this as well. I think we've expressed that pretty clearly. So let's talk about timeline just for a minute. So would it be reasonable to expect the short-term agreement to be on the City Council's first Janu- January agenda, which would be January seventh of two thousand and twenty?
I, that's our goal. I, I think, yes, that's very much a reasonable expectation.
Okay. That would be my expectation. And then in terms of going forward over the long term, talk about the timeline of the future bid because that is of concern, and how long that might take, and when you would expect to have that ready.
I can't say anything more than early two thousand and twenty. We have sought input, we will continue to seek input on how to better put these documents out to, to, I'm, I'm going to say attract the best bid for the city. And nothing, that's not a statement against First Star. We do great business with them, but, but my job's to try to come up with a better price than what's in front of you right now. So it, it, part of those things that we're going to try to do with, come up with a better price is, is, we're, we're considering that longer term. We're also considering different terms to, as I said, we, we need, we're hearing from those that did and did not submit to make sure we appropriately share risks. And, and I did share a document with Jim Doubting yesterday, about noon yesterday for distribution. I hope you all were able to read that, and if you have any questions related to that document, I would, I would like to answer any questions that you have related to that document. But I'm willing to say that it's our goal to have a new set of bid documents out in early two thousand and twenty, but that, that will take time to make sure we get it right, to get the best possible bid for the city.
Okay. Thank you for that. And let me just say, I encourage you to stay in close contact with the City, City Council on that when you're forming that bid this time. And I'll go on record saying I won't support a contract that diminishes our recycling effort anyway, whether that's materials or drop-off sites or what have you, especially at a time when we're expecting recycling to, recycling to increase with our carts that happened in two thousand and twenty-one and have that expectation. So I'll yield the floor for now, but I, I will say, I think the City Council did the right thing by delaying this last week to bring this together and have this conversation about the short term and securing service January first. But I still remain quite concerned about the long term here, and I think there's a lot of work to be done to show our commitment towards that over the next ten years.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree that this last week has been well-spent. I think we went from no way, no how to here we have an agreement in principle. And to Mr. Gubels' point about having, I appreciate the, the, the words of caution about the, the timeline, but I think as we've proven in the last week that a lot can happen in, in just a week's time. So I'm, I'm confident that, that all parties, the city, the bid process will, will work going forward and, and that we'll, we'll make, we'll make our deadlines, and they might be tight, but we'll make them, and we'll make them work. I expressed this morning at, at pre-council, again, I, I know we've talked about the, the framework that we're going to be working off of for this, for this agreement, but truly, these are pretty general terms. The devil is in the details, but I'm confident between the good-faith efforts of both First Star and the city that we can get to that agreement. And I would, I would caution, though, that I, bring it to us when you have it right. If it's not quite right on January seventh, or whatever that Tuesday is, let's just make sure that it's right to avoid any future delays. And, and again, I know you've both committed to, to do that in good faith, and so I look forward to considering whatever that agreement is when it gets to this body. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add my comments that, to echo what was just said, that the primary concern of this council has been the uninterrupted continuation of recycling in the city as one of our primary concerns in how the city handles its environmental element of the master plan. It's of immense importance to the people of District Three and of each and every district represented in the city and this council, as evidenced by the time that we've taken to slow this down. It's like Councilmember Harding said, you know, it was, it was a no way, no how with the prospects looking pretty gloomy just, just last week. And here we are today with this agreement in principle. The lawyers have to do their thing and, and finalize this. But I'm confident that, that we will have this agreement, and we will have at least through twelve thirty-one of twenty, a short-term guarantee on the horizon for the continuation of, of recycling in this city. But lots of work to do to make sure that on January one of twenty-one, we have our, our ducks in a row and the best possibility of uninterrupted service and a company who's equipped to handle the volume of what's to come on that date. I'm also relieved that an Omaha company and the, and the, and the jobs that are there have been protected. And this business who wants to expand and wants to grow in our city will have that opportunity to, to be taking those steps. So has there been a motion to second? There's been a motion to deny the appeal, and has that been seconded?
Yes.
And seconded, mindful that if this isn't finalized in January, we can always have a reconsideration. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items fifty-three through sixty-eight do not require a public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.